Council members, please take your seats. We're going to get started with the public hearing in a moment. Okay, everybody, it's 5:59 PM. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Present.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance to revise the existing GIS and mapping department fee schedule. Is there any? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting's adjourned. We'll restart in one minute. Thank you. Okay, everybody, it's 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the voting session to order. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Attorney skin, could you please announce our executive session?
Prior to the meeting today, we had an executive discussion on our litigation matters.
All right, thank you. We do have one ceremonial proclamation, and it is for Italian-American Heritage Month. Whereas October is recognized as Italian-American Heritage Month by United States Congress, the President, and numerous other governments throughout the country, and whereas Italian-American Heritage Month is set to coincide with Columbus Day, a holiday meant to celebrate Christopher Columbus's voyage to America, which remains a source of pride for many Italian-Americans. And Italian-Americans, whereas Italian-Americans have made numerous lasting impacts on the world, from the invention of the telephone by Antonio Meucci and discoveries in nuclear physics by Enrico Fermi, to the shaping of American entertainment with individuals like Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin, Francis Ford Coppola, and Martin Scorsese, to major sports figures in Vince Lombardi, Joe DiMaggio, Joe Paterno, and more locally Charlie Trippi. And whereas Luzerne County has an active and significant population of Italian-American citizens who take pride in their heritage and give back to the community in many ways. And whereas UNICO is an Italian-American service organization that is active in Luzerne County. And whereas the acronym UNICO stands for unity, neighborliness, integrity, charity, and opportunity. And whereas the Wilkes-Barre chapter of UNICO has engaged in numerous philanthropic activities throughout the area, including the UNICO Football Game, Miss UNICO Pageant, volunteering at the St. Vincent de Paul Soup Kitchen, annual scholarship dinner, and numerous other events. And whereas UNICO's motto of service above self has guided the organization in its desire to serve the community and bring continued pride to those of Italian descent in America. Now therefore, we, Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim October as Italian-American Heritage Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of those whose Italian roots have made a lasting positive impact in Luzerne County and all throughout the United States. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your list forgot Lady Gaga.
Oh, that's right. She is also Italian. Listen, I can name a thousand, a thousand celebrities that are Italian. Anyway, all right. Any deletions from the voting session agenda? Motion to adopt the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Is there anybody for public comment, voting session agenda items? Anybody in the audience? All right, we have one hand up on the Zoom. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the introduction, well, first of all, the capital plan. I can't help, Mr. Chair, and members of council, manager, Prokomo, and ladies and gentlemen, to say about the capital plan. For years of me being on the Redevelopment Authority and other boards, I have said numerous times that the capital budget could be replenished through many ways, especially through the economic development, Mr. Chair, as you and I have had many debates and discussions about this with regards to LERTA's. I still believe that the TIF and other economic development tools, unlike the gentleman you brought in for the work session that had that one hour and 20-minute filibuster on LERTA's, especially with the example of the Arena Project that was the most successful TIF project in Pennsylvania's history, and DCD has spotlighted it itself, the state has, as one of the most successful TIFs that was utilized. So I think instead of giving away the store as the county has been notoriously known to do during the Commissioner days, and in some cases during Home Rule, I think that that should be explored for the capital plan. And now for the budget, three things. One is the court staff for the 11th judge. Mr. Chair, that could have been done two years ago when the state authorized the 11th judge. And I can't help but ask for the manager and for members of council, a few years ago, when you got elected, that they should have gone to Senator Lisa Baker's office because she's the chair of the Judiciary Committee responsible for the funding of all the judges in the state. So why wasn't there any dialogue with her office about that? Secondly, with respect to the budget for the prison, where was, you know, the discussion with WLPAT with regards to the additional expense when the contract was up? Where was Mr. Wilbur? Where was Ms. Roselle? Where was the manager on that? And thirdly, and lastly, with regards to the bridge, roads? Mr. Chair, there's $9 million from the budget for the Danico Bridge and from the 14.2 million, now 13.2 million for the U-DAG money. So those monies are available. So I think, Mr. Chair, this 2%, 1.9% is unnecessary and can be reduced.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Hearing done. It's our motion to approve the minutes of the September 23, 2025 voting session.
Sure. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, I'd like to make one amendment to the minutes.
Okay.
When I reviewed them, I noticed an omission. If you could locate your voting session minutes. Page five of six. Under the long, long minutes discussion on item number nine, that was the motion to adopt the ordinance. ERCO, Responsible Contractors Ordinance, and beyond the two amendments, we went on then to, after public comment, on page five of six. If you notice, near the bottom of the page, right above item number 10. On the roll call vote to adopt, there were indeed seven yeses and four noes. But the four noes, there's only three people listed, Mr. Haas voted against it, Mr. Lescavage, and myself voted against the Responsible Contract Ordinance, and I believe Mr. Perry voted against it also. And I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes that we add Mr. Perry's name to the four no votes.
Okay, there's a motion for that amendment. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are amended to reflect Mr. Perry voting no on the Responsible Contracting Ordinance. All right, there's a motion in a second to adopt the minutes. Is everybody okay with keeping their motion as is amended? All right, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are adopted. We'll now move on to the agenda. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance to revise the existing GIS and mapping department fee schedule. Motion is second. Roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the recommendations of Zigman and Company regarding security bond limits to protect Luzerne County against risks of loss for calendar year 2026.
So moved.
Motion is second. Roll call?
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Wilkes-Barre Wyoming Valley Airport.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Any question? Roll call?
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to apply for a statewide local share account grant.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement funds to XT Enterprise Recover U.
Second.
There's a motion and a sec. I, Ms. Smith?
Okay.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call?
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease renewal agreement between Luzerne County and Domfort Enterprises.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Sabatino, I think. Roll call?
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten to one, it passes.
Number seven, introduction of ordinance amending the capital plan budget for Luzerne County. Manager Prokomo?
I will be introducing that ordinance to amend the capital plan.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, number eight, introduction of the ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County.
I will be introducing the ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget in Luzerne County for, and we will have public hearings on these going forward.
Thank you. And number nine, introduction of ordinance adopting the 2026 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County.
And I'm introducing the ordinance adopting the 2026 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and I look forward for robust discussion with council.
All right, thank you very much. Anything about any council members? Okay, hearing done. We'll have public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody in the audience? Ms. Williams?
Denise Williams, Kingston Township. My public comment concerns the reasons provided to the public for entering executive sessions, specifically when the stated reason is simply litigation. Providing only that word offers no meaningful context. I respectfully suggest that council consider offering a bit more specificity, such as litigation involving an inmate at the prison, litigation involving the Redevelopment Authority, or litigation in White versus Luzerne County. When I served as Chair of the Board of Elections, I always provided more detail than simply litigation. Identifying the specific matter involved, I believe it is a good practice and an important part of maintaining openness, accountability, and transparency with the public that council serves. Thank you.
Williams, anybody else for public comment in the audience? All right, we have one on the Zoom. Mark, Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I had feedback in my initial public comment with regards to $9 million that is in the interest payment for the, from the LSA infrastructure fund money that could be utilized for road and bridge projects if the manager and council so chooses to do so. So that's, that was what I was getting at in my initial public comment. Also, with respect to the 11th judge, the funding for the 11th judge and their staff, as I said to you, Mr. Chairman, and all the members of council, and I would hope that maybe you can confer with Councilman Haas, who had two roundtable discussions when he was the committee chair of the Legislative Committee on Council, when the state delegation the county with respect to increasing the reimbursements of the monies that is sent from the courthouse, the judiciary, to Harrisburg, that 20%, up to 20% shall be refunded, reimbursed, excuse me, reimbursed to the counties to pay for the judiciary staff salaries and their expenditures. So I think that council people, council members, McDermott and Lescavage spoke to Lisa Baker as well as the county manager with respect to that a couple of years back. I think now, Mr. Chairman, is the time that we need, that you guys need to have a dialogue with Senator Lisa Baker's office, as the state budget is now still held up, I know that, for the school district funding. So I think maybe is the time, the opportune time for council to have that dialogue once again with Senator Lisa Baker's office to increase the reimbursement, as it's been $500,000 to Luzerne County for at least past 20 years plus. So I think another half-million dollar increase, make it at $1 million, won't break the state budget to send back to Luzerne County, making it even $1 million. So I think that is a reasonable request that can be made, and I think that needs to be done for next year's budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Voting session's adjourned. Is everybody okay with just going right into the work session? All right, well, I'd like to call the work session to order. It's 6:18 PM. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Kryshniewski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Can I just move agenda item number two to the end because the gentleman that's supposed to be on is in another meeting?
Sure, so number two will be moved to number five?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's adopted. First up, we have division reports.
As always, if council has any questions on the division report, you can text, call, and email me, and Leanne, my email is now fixed for you. So I'm very proud of the staff, and these division reports are an example of the level of transparency that Luzerne County is dedicated to. When Mary Roselle gives her fiscal report, that's the bookend that shows the level of transparency. I challenge anybody to show any other county, or municipality, or school district in the area that is more transparent than Luzerne County. So I'm very proud of my staff, and I know that you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Prokomo. I know one thing that I don't think made into the division report was the Department of Emergency Services trunk or treat that happened just a few days ago.
Well, that'll be next, next month.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, all right, well.
If I could jump in, 911 EMA's trunk or treat was fabulous.
It'll be hard to beat.
It was such a great time.
Excellent.
I wasn't expecting so many people, but it was, it was a great time. So many kids.
Great.
And I want everybody to know that this is the staff that puts this together, staff and their family, because they see not only a need, but the drive for people to understand that Luzerne County is one unified county, and we are here to be with each other. So I applaud the staff of EMA and 911, and all the people who participated.
And that's all I want to say, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
I just want to applaud Manager Prokomo and the staff too, because you're always forthcoming with information. Whenever I need something, and I give you a reach out, you know, I appreciate that. And I know with this budget impasse as we continue to go, I know, Ormilda, you're already putting the stopgap wherever you can, but I would encourage you and our staff, our leadership, let's keep the spending down to an absolute minimum, because who knows how much longer this is going to go on. I talked to C cap, and Mr. Raybo was talking about the courts. A lot of other counties are bringing that issue back up again. We did address the underfunding of the courts many years ago. And really, if you look at that, that's where a lot of our shortfall is coming from. It's, again, I hate my beating a dead horse here. You can't get blood from a rock, and I can't tell those people how to do their jobs, but it trickles down. And their inaction in Harrisburg makes us be the bag man, and we have to take other measures that they're unwilling to do.
Right. If there is a push to go to Harrisburg to get more funding for the courts from the state, which I will gladly participate in, but it's something that various counties across the Commonwealth have to participate in. If we do it alone, we're not going to prevail. So I know there's a C cap conference coming up, and maybe we can address that. But we have to build courtrooms and chambers for the judge that is being elected. And there's a possibility that we're getting another judge in 2027, and so we have to prepare for that as well. And here's what we're dealing with, and I don't want to necessarily throw any blame to federal or state officials. But when funding is cut, it trickles down to the individuals that we serve. I said this the other day. County governments in Pennsylvania are the highest level of government that is fully functional today in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And we have mandated services, and what I will do is provide you with mandated services, particularly with children and youth and families. We have mandated services that we have to perform, whether we have federal or state funding. And what happens when we can't pay providers, and providers don't get paid, individuals don't get their services, people who need mental health services, people who need the drug and alcohol services, they don't get their services, and there's a probability that they will turn to crime. And what happens when there's more crime? We need more public defenders. We need more district attorneys. Our court docket, which is really daunting, we have a full court docket on the civil and criminal, and on the dependency and the custody side. Then the docket increases even more, and on the criminal side, when the criminal docket increases, so does our prison population. So there are genuine consequences of the fact that we are not getting monies that we need to perform mandated services. But I will tell you this, Luzerne County will perform those mandated services. We will do that. But there are consequences for the inaction of our state and federal representatives. That's just the reality that we're living in. And I think we have to take note that it probably will happen again for next year's budget. So this was, I've told this to a number of people, this was a very difficult budget. It was very difficult for us to, when we're trying to streamline government and streamline services, but increase services at the same time, costs are going up, and then we have this, this federal and state impasse. And every day that goes by, it affects us here locally. But we're going to, we're going to do it. We're going to make sure that the services get done for the people who deserve it.
Thank you, Manager Prokomo. Just to add to something that was said earlier about having discussions with our state legislators about, in particular, our reimbursement for the courts, that is something I know personally that I have spoken to several of them about, that I've spoken, I know that Mr. Thornton has spoken to them about it, and other council members have, have been reaching out. So these conversations are happening. It's not like, it's not like we're ignoring them. They are definitely happening, and we're just as frustrated as everybody else when we get answers that, you know, essentially are not satisfactory for us, that involve us getting the money that we deserve. So we, that is happening. Okay. All right, we'll move on. Number two, new number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with GEO Reentry Services LLC for substance use disorder counseling services.
This is a service that is provided by GEO. We have a representative here. If there's any questions for number three and number four, but they provide very important services to our inmate population when it comes to substance use and counseling services. If you have any questions, there is a representative here.
Any questions, council members, on number three or number four? All right, well, we essentially covered number four as well.
Yes.
So, okay, next up, we have discussion regarding resolution approving an agreement with Newport Township, with Newport Township for the collection of Newport Township taxes by Luzerne County Treasurer's Office.
Good evening, council. We're asking for a resolution to be passed, just as we did last year, authorizing our treasurer's department to collect the taxes for Newport Township. We get paid $2.60 a bill for every bill that we collect. It amounts to a It amounts to about $6,000 in revenue for the Treasurer's Office. There are over 2,000 parcels that are taxable in Newport Township. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I mean, we've done this before, right?
We've done it for several, yes.
We've collected Newport Township before. We helped them out in full confidence in our Treasurer's Office, so I don't see any issue with that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rozell? All right, thank you very much. Finally, we'll move on to the discussion regarding the AVP by county partnership. Ms. McDermott, if you want to just kind of give us a little bit of a background on this?
Yes, and we have the attorney who's working on this for the airport. Unfortunately, he's on another meeting, and he was planning on being on closer to seven. We had a speed round on our voting session and work session, so I'm not sure if he's going to.
Sorry, we went too fast.
I know, that never happens. But our Assistant Director for the airport is here, BJ Teckman, and I would like her to at least start it off. I don't know if you're going to be able to answer all of the questions. That's why we want, but at least she can get us to start with explaining it.
Okay.
We can set something up, though, with the attorney.
Yeah, if he doesn't get on, and I'm waiting, but.
I think it's on.
Good evening. Thank you for this invitation. My name is BJ Techman. I am the Assistant Executive Director at the Wilkes-Barre Scranton International Airport, and I'm here as a representative for the airport to talk about a very important agreement. For those of you who don't know me, I learned to fly in 1981. Please do not do the math. I worked my way through graduate school flying at night, and did my internship at Duke. For the past eight years, I've served on the Aviation Advisory Council to the Governor and the Aviation Council of Pennsylvania, respectively, formerly as Vice President, and I currently serve as the President of our PA State Aviation Council. I share this small portion of my aviation background with you, because while I understand that this is a work session this evening, I urge the Luzern County Council to adopt this agreement on October 28th for the following reasons. The FAA has informed us that the grant funds are at risk if this is not done very soon. Currently, our airport has approximately $21.3 million in anticipated grant funds over the next several years for very important projects. Our goal is to maintain the current function of the airport board as it works today, and finalizing this agreement is largely cleanup to meet the FAA requirements. At this time, I was planning to introduce Nicholas Clappers. Nicholas is with Kaplan and Kirsch, which is an aviation attorney law firm. That's what they specialize in, and I was going to pass the baton to him to answer legal questions that would be out of my realm. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Skeen actually has a question for you, if you don't mind.
It was my understanding from when we had a meeting with him, with Nicholas, last time, that at one point, it was suggested that between the two counties, they had three options. One, form an authority. Two, form a partnership. Or three, one of the two counties just takes over the airport themselves. And when was that ever brought to council? Because I understand the decision that's been made is that we're going to file the partnership agreement. But there was one of three options, according to Nicholas, and that's the option that appears to be what we're going toward.
To the best of my knowledge, I would not be able to answer that, given that I started in February of 2025.
She, she wasn't there. She was not there when that decision was made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it was not brought to council, and I don't believe it was brought to the Commissioners in Lackawanna County either, but I don't want to speak, I absolutely do not want to speak for Lackawanna County.
Mr. Thornton, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It says here in the agreement document that the original agreement was forged back in 1968 between the two counties. Right? And if I heard what you were saying correctly a minute ago, the reason we're forming a new agreement is because the FAA has newer regulations than that which was in place in 1968?
That is correct. It is my understanding that in order to receive federal aviation grant funds, it has to be under the name of one sponsor to receive and sign for grant funds, as opposed to two different, by two different counties.
So one sponsor would be, a partnership is considered one sponsor?
Affirmative.
Okay. And, you know, I was reading through the clauses in this, which on the surface appear to be very sound clauses. I want to draw attention to Section 2.01, Article Two, under Creation and the Name. The counties agree to create pursuant to Pennsylvania law a general partnership with each county as an equal general partner in the partnership and no other partners. The name of the partnership shall be AVP by County Partnership. I guess I should have jumped down to 2.03 purposes. That's what the clause that has me a little bit concerned. The purpose of the partnership is to manage, operate, and maintain the airport, with each county being equally responsible for the cost of the partnership. That came to light last year in a big manner, where the state cut funding for security at the airport. I think everybody here remembers that. And suddenly, the airport said, ah, we have no money to pay our police officers in our security here. And, and our district attorney was very concerned, rightfully so, and we needed a solution. So his solution was to come to council here, Luzern County Council, and ask for all of the money to pay all of the security at the airport for an ongoing basis. And our questions were, well, Lackawanna County is an equal partner, what is their contribution? And the answer was zero, because Lackawanna County said, we're sorry, we just don't have the money. I thought that was very unreasonable. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because I know you're not going to answer Lackawanna County, nor should you. But I'm just stating a fact that I have concerns with the agreement, the way it was written, because I thought in the past, we had an equal partnership with Lackawanna County, but apparently we didn't. And, and I wish council maybe could have got involved with this earlier than just bringing it tonight and asking us to vote on it two weeks from now. That's just my concerns I'm stating out loud. Thank you.
Attorney Skeen?
Yes, I've been involved.
Microphone, please.
I've been involved with this for a little while with negotiating the contract, and it has changed a number of times. At first, there was a much longer one that was more complicated, but covered a lot. As they've gotten whittled down, this is a basic partnership agreement, so not that there's a lot wrong with it. But we have certain things that are, that are going to happen under this agreement that haven't been determined how it's going to happen yet. But once we sign this, you all vote on it and sign it, because I don't vote, we will then have to, if we don't come to an agreement, we'll then be in arbitration in litigation with Lackawanna County over that. One of my suggestions was that we iron everything out in advance, that we could see, that we know could possibly be a problem, before we sign the agreement, or make that part of the agreement, so we know what it's going to be, rather than just quickly signing it and then having to litigate it or have a problem in the future.
Oh, Mr. Sabatino, and then Mr. Lescavage.
I have a concern with the land. Should this hypothetically, the airport dissolve, who, like, would Lackawanna own 50% of the land, according to this agreement?
Yes, that would make, once they want, this agreement would have the partnership own all of the land. Technically now, before it's a partnership, the two entities have been part of gathering the property since the 1950s. So they've put in less than $300,000. Most of the property was obtained back then, and property was less expensive. So it would be put into two deeds. One, the Lackawanna County property would be one deed, and the Luzern County property would be another deed. But if for some reason the airport ceased to exist, then however they, the property was sold, it would be split. Now, according to Nicholas, it doesn't work that easily, because he said that there's been grants, and if there's some grants that are covering it, then it would be encumbered by the federal government, though their name's not on any deed. And if it was the government, I don't know who would take care of the property. If it ended up, for some reason, going defunct, then is, is one or the other county's going to keep paying for a closed-down airport? I doubt that's going to happen, but you never, you never know.
What is the split on the land like? What is the percentage that Luzern County owns, and what is the percentage that Lackawanna owns?
They're not owns, because right now it would be by the two entities that own. But it would be about 93% of it is, resides in Luzern County.
Mr. Lescavage?
So that was going to be my question too, because I thought it was a 90-10 split. And then my idea isn't that it goes defunct, but, you know, someone else comes in and swoops in and wants to buy it. And then we kind of don't get our fair share for the amount of land that falls in Luzern County. In addition to what Mr. Thornton brought up too with the security. And again, we discussed this not long ago, and I'm all in favor of security at the airport. I would never not want to pay for security at the airport if it's only left up to us. But if we're in a partnership, it should be a partnership. Don't call it one if it isn't. So that's ultimately where that should fall. That's it.
No, Ms. McDermott, and then Mr. Sabatino.
Just in reference to the, you know, the security there, I mean, we, we have talked about it here, and that is a separate issue. I know it's, it is a concern of ours, and obviously, we'll talk about that when the DH comes in to do his budget. But that is one thing that I did, and I keep asking, Lackawanna County, everybody that's in the board, the Board of Meeting knows that, I do ask Lackawanna County to put in some money. Now, Chris Chirmac is trying to get some, but as you know, there's only two Commissioners there, so they might just be using last year's budget. I think at this point, they will be. And that's unfortunate, because they had no money, and there are four of that. So that's where we're at, but I do keep asking, as does Mr. Griffiths, right?
All right, Mr. Sabatino.
Okay. As I said, where does this agreement address that? We're going to discuss that separately, or it's a separate agreement or a separate addendum? And then my other question is dovetailing on what Mr. Lescavage said. You know, we are the ones that are funding things now, because we are in a better financial position than Lackawanna. Are we, if there is a sale, do we get a reimbursement for their half of what we've been funding? Like, there's a lot of concerns I have about this, you know? And I think sometimes we get rushed into things, and I'd rather, I understand the urgency, but I'd rather take our time and hammer out a little bit more of a firmer agreement than just a bare-bones, bare-knuckles agreement, you know?
Is there a drop-dead date for this contract?
There, there is. We really need to have it wrapped up before the end of the year.
Okay. So what, does that mean January 1 is when the, the date is that we need to have it completed by?
I wouldn't go beyond January, because that sends us into fiscal year 2026 for grant funding.
Okay. Mr. Sabatino, and then Attorney Skeen had a comment, and then Mr. Thornton.
I guess my question is, if this has been going on for some time, why hasn't it been brought to us before tonight? If anybody can answer that.
All right. Attorney Skeen, you want to make a remark?
So it was mentioned that, that they were pushing this because of grants. But like I said, there was three different agreements, and just at our last meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago, LeAnn asked for the final agreement, and Nicholas sent us the final agreement. So there have been a couple of different changes in the agreement. Some may have been because of all the questions that I was asking. But the, the question that you had about the budget and all that, so if the budget is going to be the same budget as last year, and they're going to adopt that budget, then it's going to be, they're not going to be contributing funds, because they didn't contribute them in '25. So that is something, again, that you'd want to be able to bring up before this gets signed, and say, what kind of accommodation are you going to do to make sure that, that you split the funds like a partnership would be? If we just, if this is just signed, and that issue is not addressed, then you're going to have to litigate that issue if they're not contributing money in for the following year. It could be worked out. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to be negative. Anything could be worked out.
I guess what I would, what I would ask is that anything that Luzern County, either county, has paid extra, like, we are paying for security now, that money be returned to us before any other, any other, like, Lackawanna County's share of that money would be returned to us before any other money is split. So we'd get that off the top, like, their share of what they're not paying now.
When?
Should the airport be dissolved, and we're splitting assets? We should get our money back off the top of that.
Right. I didn't see, I don't know their books, so I don't know how they're booking that, if that's, like, they're not booking, if they're not booking it as a debt, you're going to have to follow back the years to try to figure that out. And I don't know that it's ever going to close down. I mean, I hope it wouldn't. I like using the airport.
It's a great airport.
Mr. Thornton, and then Mr. Wilovich.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
I'm sorry. A couple other concerns. Nobody in the private sector would go into partnership with someone as an equal, 50-50, if you know for a fact they can't pay their share of expenses. I mean, imagine I form a landscape company with Mr. Perry, and in the first month, one of our biggest tractor breaks down. I say, Chris, you know, we're Rico Partners, we got to pay $4,000 to fix this. Could you give me two? He says, no, I have no money, I'm sorry. And this goes on and on and on. Why would I want to form a partnership with an entity? I hate to use you, Mr. Perry, I know you would never do that. But I, it just didn't make, it doesn't make sense for us to sit here and say, in two weeks, we should sign this agreement. These are all very valid concerns tonight that everybody brought up. All of them should be addressed before we sign or vote on anything in two weeks, or even four weeks from now. The other concern I have, we can't predict the future. We saw firsthand what a lack of security your police does at the airport. How much that costs? That was a lot of money that we had to doll out out of Luzern County taxpayer funds, no Lackawanna County contribution. And I just want to say, what if going forward, you know, we're working now with our own airport, the county airport over in Forty-Fort Wyoming, and I, I see firsthand all the big concerns there, the fuel farm. What if there's an emergency situation at the Evoque Airport with the fuel farm, and something disastrous happens, and it's an immediate $800,000 fix? We have to fix it, or that airport's not going to function. So it has to get fixed. Is, is Lackawanna County maybe going to say, we're sorry, we didn't budget for that? We can't put 400 grand in? You guys pay for it now, we'll talk to you later? I just, we can't foresee what might happen in the future there. These are all things that should be ironed out before tonight. I hate, I hate getting cornered in a corner, my back against the wall, saying, here it is, two weeks, you got to vote on it, or else. This has happened to us in the past there several times, and I, I just don't like it. Thank you.
Mr. Lescavage, then, Mr. Wilovich. Sorry. I, I called on Mr. Lescavage first.
So I brought this up the last time, this came up with the security. Why can't we not put whatever, look at the parking, and put a dollar on a parking ticket in that airport to pay for that? That would alleviate this whole conversation.
I'd like to respond to the security, and I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that the airport already pays, the airport itself pays over a half a million dollars for security. The additional security that you were funding, and Lackawanna County is not funding, is a separate team, so.
Actually, it's a police force.
Police.
So there's a distinction between the hired security and, and the police.
But again, is that an option, to put that on a parking ticket?
I would not be able to comment on that at this time.
Could you please find out?
I could, I can find out.
Because I think that would alleviate, you know, this conversation. I brought it up before, and it kind of died, but I think it's a good idea that if we put a dollar on a parking ticket, it would pay for that police protection at the airport.
We did, we did bring that up, those of us who are on the board. We did bring. We did bring that up, and what we were told was the airlines have to approve it, that the airlines get a tuck, a cut of the parking. That really doesn't, I, I have to be honest, I, I don't see it in the budget, in the airport budget, as reported that way, but that's what we were told.
Mr. Wolovich.
And also, the airport does contribute towards the LEO program as well, just like Lackawanna County does not, right?
Correct. We contribute 60-
So it's not 50-50. There's also a contribution from the airport.
The airport has contributed $60,000 to the LEO program.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Haas?
So it seems like this agreement coerces Lackawanna County to pay their fair share finally. I mean, I like that part of the, of the agreement. What I'm, if I'm reading, what I'm reading here makes sense to me. However, I, I do have two issues. I mean, maybe it's a question for Mr. Skeen, maybe yourself, PJ. If we look at the, the charge on page 38 from the FAA, is there, they're looking to identify a, a single federal sponsor? I mean, if, if we're the pay, if we're the entity that's paying the lion's share of the bills, can the agreement just state that Luzerne County is the point of contact for that? Does that, that doesn't really change the existing partnership. Is that a possibility, that we could take that approach? I'm sure it would be wildly popular in Lackawanna County to put something like that out there, but nonetheless-
It's basically ownership. It's ownership. So if, if Luzerne County alone took it, it would be Luzerne County owning the airport.
It would be a sole proprietorship, then you're saying, no more partnership, it would just have to revert to that.
Well, it has to be two entities, and the two entities can't, can't exist without being a single entity. So the partnership agreement makes it a single entity.
But I, I think a concern for him, Councilman Sabatino, he's worried about some of the assets that we had, that we invested in it already. Can't we put a caveat on here, saying the, the current assets will stay, stay true? I mean, legally, Mr. Skeen, if you could. And I think that would rectify what your problem is, what your concern is, rather. My other issue, it's unrelated, I don't know if you want to address that somebody first, because I have one more question as well. Is that a possibility? Could we, could we do something like that?
All right, we have, we have one of the attorneys on now.
Yes, good evening. Sorry, I apologize. I had another meeting right before this that ran way, way over what it was supposed to, and I could not get out of it. So thanks for, for having me in.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
All right, have you heard, have you heard any of the dialogue that we've had? I, I know I just saw you pop up like a minute ago.
No, I have not. I've just, in the last 60 seconds, jumped on.
Okay, all right. Did you have anything prepared that you wanted to speak on, as before? Because council has a, a litany of questions they've been asking.
Sure. My goal with this session was just to review the parameters of kind of the agreement, the rationale behind it, why we have put this together and are putting this forward, you know, as the airport's solution to an issue, and then to answer any questions that you all may have. So I don't know how much of that introductory piece BJ may have already covered, but I'm happy to go into more detail about that, or just take questions.
All right. I guess we could just-
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. Initially, my concern was, I brought up the situation this past year, where federal funding was cut for airport security and police that was in place, as, I think it was as of May this past year. And our district attorney came to us, appropriately so, and said, we, we have to suddenly foot the bill for this, even though I understand airport does pay a good amount towards that, 500,000 or something was spoken about tonight. However, he came to Luzerne County, us, the council, and said, we need to, you know, start putting, I think it was 11,000 a month, I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, 130, 2,000 per year, something like that. And he said, we need to come up with that. And my question to him was, well, how much of that is Lackawanna County paying? And he said, nothing. Because like, we went to Lackawanna County, and they said, we're sorry, we have no money. And my question here tonight is, the clause 2.03 under Article 2 of this agreement speaks that the costs are to be shared equally, responsible by both parties. And that's obviously not the case, or not the prevailing winds north of us, I would say. I'm concerned if there's more, bigger emergencies up there, like a fuel farm failure, or God forbid, an emergency disaster, and there's a large repair bill, or the airport gets shut down if we don't fix it right away, what happens if 800,000 is needed right away, and Lackawanna County says, we didn't budget for that? We're sorry, we don't have the 400,000 to give. So I said, I would never go into partnership in the private sector with another entity when I know for a fact that when there's expenses incurred, the other, my other half in partnership with you, and I love realizing the profits and whatnot, but I have no money to share with you for expenses. So that's my big concern. The other concern we all seem to have is this was kind of thrown at us on the 11th hour here, and the other representative here asked us to, you know, please vote on this in two weeks from now. And, and we all agree that, or most people that spoke, said that's going to be difficult to achieve. So that was my concerns. Thank you.
Sure. So I, I can't speak to sort of the dynamic between Luzerne and Lackawanna as to that, that law enforcement issue. Our understanding and our direction in preparing this agreement as counsel to the airport was to try to memorialize the way that the board operates today, and the way that the counties have, as I understand it, operated for 50 to 60 years in partnership in operation of, of the airport. On sort of the, the timing of this agreement, you know, this is something that has been in varying stages of dispute with the FAA, and in development at the airport level for now three-ish years. This was first brought to the airport's attention, I think it was at some point in 2022, and we spent about two years trying to resolve this with the FAA without this partnership agreement. We pushed back pretty hard on their claims that we needed something like this, and ultimately, we were not successful in convincing them of that. So, you know, I, I think this has, this has had a process, and we have tried not to elevate it to this level, and unfortunately, this is where we have landed.
Ms. Stevenson, you had a question?
Um, yes. I know we have several other questions for gentlemen here, but is there a reason that Lackawanna's commissioners are not currently a part of this discussion?
Well, they are, but we're, we're, we're here in Luzerne. We didn't invite them. We can do that and see if they want to come.
Are they, I mean, what, what, I apologize to other council members that have questions, but what has their reaction been to this? Because I'm, I'm fairly certain that the representatives from Luzerne County have been bringing these concerns to the airport board meetings, especially while we're having this discussion about this.
Well, if you're talking about the LEO, Commissioner Chirmac is supportive and, and trying to work something out, and Commissioner Gahn has said that he believes that the airport does not need police.
Okay.
Wow, okay.
That's, okay. All right. Mr. Sabatino?
To, to address what Ms. Stevenson was saying, I feel like we're at a disadvantage, because we're 11 people trying to decide something, and there are three people that get to go to all these, well, two now, but there are three commissioners that get to go to all these board meetings. So they get to go in there in a unified setting and, and come as a cohesive unit, where you three are, are, are representatives, and then we have to figure it out. So to have a discussion with them now, to say, okay, we want to hammer things out a little bit differently, would probably be the best way to go, because we don't get the advantage that they do, to only have three people show up, and those three people make the decision.
But that's why we had our solicitors, and Reynolds was helping with that too. But I mean, we had to get it together as much as we could. Can you imagine bringing it to, to everybody way back when, at least when they were at this? So I think we need to be able to list our concerns and hope that we can get an answer, and it may not be today. Maybe we'll have to put it on a work session in two more weeks to be able to get those. But, and, and we can certainly ask Lackawanna County Commissioners to be here. I don't know if they will show up, I'm just saying. But, but certainly, they could be invited.
So would it be appropriate tonight for us to just compile our questions for the attorney that, that's on the Zoom, and get answers the next time around?
I think that's fair.
And, and I know, and again, this was, this was discussed in an executive session three weeks ago, and I said I was going to have it on the October 14th, and we were trying to get an informational session, you know, with several people individually, but here we are. So again, this is a starting point. If it doesn't get voted on, which I know it's not going to in two weeks, so be it. But we have to keep the, the discussion going. So I would say, let's compile our questions, our concerns, and be able to pick this up in-
So we should send our questions to you by the end of the week?
Yeah. Would you be okay with collecting all the questions and then forwarding them-
I'll be the point of contact.
By the end of the week? Can we, can we include the other members who are on the airport board from Luzerne County, just in those emails? Just CC the other members of the board? Mr. Wolovich, Ms. Croco?
Well, yeah. Could be everybody. I don't, it's fine with me.
Yeah. Well, no, I just mean, make, you know, make sure that they're involved in that.
You start the discussion, so we have all the questions.
Yeah. And, and I would say, everybody just respond back, so that it's not the same question being asked, you know, over and over.
Right.
Okay. I have a question for the attorney, Mr. Chair, if I could. I think it's going to help me craft the questions. I'll send them to Ms. McDermott. But sir, welcome, welcome to Wilkes-Barre virtually. What, can, can you just explain to us what, what is the drive behind the FAA mandating this? Is it just a, a single point of contact for, for administrative purposes, to, to keep the bureaucracy down? Or are they looking to make a more egalitarian partnership? Is that what their drive is? Can you explain that to us? And that might help us craft something?
No. It has nothing to do with the relationship between the counties, per se. As many of you may know, there is an existing partnership agreement or cooperation agreement between the counties. I believe it's from 1967 or '69. It's very old, it's two and a half pages long. The FAA has certain standards for what agreements between what they call cosponsors should look like. And we went through a, a very extended discussion with them about ways that we could change the agreement. Ultimately, their point is, and, and their desire, is that they want a single entity to sign grant agreements. And for many, many years, the grant agreements for the airport were signed as Wilkes-Barre Scranton International Airport. And the FAA told us that that nomenclature is not a legal entity, and is therefore not legally able to accept grants from the federal government.
Makes sense.
And we went on a, a long, extended legal odyssey with them about how that name actually represented both counties signing together, because that is the way that everyone has always interpreted it. And the FAA rejected that approach. We tried a number of other approaches that I, I won't get into. But ultimately, what it came down to was, the FAA told us that they needed a single entity as the sponsoring entity of the airport and the recipient of federal grants. And we explored the, the three options essentially that the FAA put to the airport staff, where one of the counties could accept the, the grants on behalf of both counties, essentially, or the two counties could form a third municipal entity, like an airport authority. Or if there was some other route that the airport could come up with that resulted in a single entity, then the FAA would consider it. And in coordination with some, some other attorneys, with Don Frederickson and Mike Butera, we came up with this partnership concept, which, you know, is a sort of a nuance of that allows this to happen without the creation of a, an authority through the Municipal Authorities Act. So that's how we arrived here.
Attorney Skeen, you got a, oh, okay, all right. Mr. Sabatino?
I guess my only question for you tonight, and I'm going to email a bunch to Ms. McDermott, is who ultimately decided that this was the option to go with? Was it the airport board? Or was it just the attorneys?
That was a conversation that I, I understand Don and Mike Butera had with the airport board about the potential options to address this issue, and this was the instruction that we were given to, to draft this document.
And one more thing, can we get a copy of the original 1968 agreement?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't believe the board voted on that. I was there at the tail end, and that's when Randy Robertson came in, and I left. And then when I came back, there was this partnership agreement. But I, I don't believe that the board actually voted on it. Right. It just kind of happened, like everything else.
It basically happened at the direction of the attorneys. So nobody really voted to, to go in this direction?
So there was a discussion-
Okay.
-in executive session, but I don't believe that there was a vote. And I, I don't know.
And I only got involved recently.
And to be clear, this, it's a little awkward, because this is not an action that the airport board should be taking. It is an action as between the two counties as a whole. And so I, I think there was discussion at the airport board level to say, this is the direction to go with this, to resolve this FAA issue. But it ultimately falls to both counties to, to take that action. It's not an airport board action that can happen.
So this, this issue has been going on in some form for several years now? Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't under the impression that this was something that was happening since the time of, previous to Randy Robertson. And that would mean then that when we had the issue with the LEO staff, that this agreement was still at the time in the works? So nothing of our concerns was reflected in this current agreement?
I don't know if it was in the works, because the partnership agreement has taken numerous forms. But there was discussion, my recollection, and this is not looking at notes or anything, my recollection is that the FAA changed their format, and it has to do with a dropdown menu, that we did not fit into that mold, because we were one of the only, if not the only airport that didn't have either a partnership agreement or an authority. The discussion was neither Luzerne or Lackawanna had any interest, at least when this discussion's on the board, to form an authority. And at that time, there was no representation made by any of the counties that they would be the lead county. So by default, it's a partnership, and the partnership agreement has been going through a lot of different machinations. And now we're at the point now where we, Luzerne County is coming to council with what is considered the final draft, meaning it's the final draft of all these machinations. Council will have to vote on, on it. I can tell you, at the time, when the initial discussions were made, Luzerne County was not in a position to say, we could be the lead. I am very happy to say that we are now. And that is an option that I believe the council needs, needs to consider.
Yes. That is so helpful. Thanks for the explanation.
I wouldn't be against that.
Extremely valid. And, and what I do want to say, and, and I, I don't want to speak for Attorney Skeen, but we're looking at this agreement, this partnership agreement. We hope the airport survives all of us. It's a wonderful asset in northeastern Pennsylvania. But we would like to have specific terms if somehow the airport fails. And we need to do that- And we need to do that, because if history is any indicator, we've been through this. And we've been through litigation. And we would just like to have something carved out should something happen. But we also, I think, are in a position right now in Luzern County to say, "Yes, we could be the lead county." Yes.
That's exactly what I was driving at, Remilde, thank you so much. Because I think that's just what our end is, we want to protect our assets, attorney. And I look at something like this, oftentimes when the bigger levels of government get involved, there's all these latent effects that happen, things that are unanticipated. And this is very important, the asset part is how we're going to finance this, I get all that. But I'm even looking at, there's something in the name, and if we start to call this the Bye County Airport, are we going to see that in airports across the country? Your flight leaves for Bye County Airport in an hour and a half? Because that's what I'm worried about. It doesn't seem like it's more, but it is, because it's high lying our area. And that's my other question that I'll craft a little better, but is this going to go further than simply just a point of contact? Because I think it passes precedent to...
Ms. Smith?
I think the answer to that would be no, because that's why it says AVP. I don't think that Bye County is going to be...
That's a different...
Mr. Sabatino, and then Mr. Thor.
Manager Croco alluded to another thing. We did have a partnership agreement for the baseball stadium in Music, and that didn't end as well for Luzern County as it should have. So if once bitten, twice shy, we need to protect ourselves. So we need to take the steps to protect ourselves now, instead of trying to litigate it later.
Mr. Thor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the benefit of the attorney on the wire out there. Thank you again for being here. I'm dismayed tonight, I'm very dismayed, at the fact that some of these concerns were voiced very loudly over the past year in public meetings here. And then I see an agreement written as it is, and I'm not blaming you or anybody here. Did anybody, when they were writing this up, say to themselves, "Huh, this is going to be a big problem, you know? We got this Thornton guy in council, he's raised these concerns." Did anybody have any discussions, or was it just, you know, do the agreement, tell them to pass it in two weeks? Because that's why I'm dismayed, I'm bothered by that fact. I don't know how this came to be this quickly, and there was no discussion or concerns about all of our concerns very publicly and loudly over the past year. Thank you. I'm not really expecting an answer, I'm just saying, that's why I'm upset.
All right, anything else from councilmembers? Ms. McDermott?
Again, we got it to a point where it could come to council. And I know the rush is the problem, so we can't rush it at this point. We know that we have to have the discussion. But again, there was a starting point, and that's where we're at. And going back to, and I do recall, it was brought up that it could be an authority. And I don't believe either county, and you could put your, you know, but nobody wants an authority.
Okay. Anything else from councilmembers? Go ahead. You might have pressed the button again.
I have allowed voice.
I think it's, no, I think it's...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and also thank your members of council and manager Croco who serve on our airport board. We appreciate the time and effort that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, do we have public comment? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, counsel. I'm sure you're going to be getting a lot of questions, so...
That's fine, I'm happy to answer any question.
I'm kind of glad that Mr. Sabatino brought up the baseball team, because that was right on the top of my list, is that issue that we had with the baseball team. The LEO program was brought up at this council meeting many, many times by me about when they canceled the contract through the FAA and cut the funding, and the county was picking up the tab. And we tried to get the airport board to address it, it hasn't been done. Councilwoman McDermott and Mr. Wolowitz have addressed it numerous times. They did raise the parking fee, not too long ago. And we were hoping, somewhere along the line, the county would realize that ambitious income that they've received, and their reports showed that they're getting lots of money at the airport. But we're not realizing any. As comptroller, I spoke about that at the airport board meetings. Manager Croco and our delegation that goes there every month has raised that issue. We can't get buy-in from the county commissioners from the other side. So the concern that I have is, everybody comes to Luzern County with a gun to our head and say, "Hey, you guys have to act, or it's going to be curtains for everybody." How about we do that once? How about we go to the airport and say, "You know what? If you don't start ponying up your money, we're not going to have your airport security." I know that's a risk, but I know they won't do that. But somebody needs to have enough stamina to say to somebody, "If you can come to us now and tell us, 'You have two weeks to sign this,' or we're going to lose all kinds of money, why don't we do that to them?" We always get the other side. Somebody's always forcing us to make a decision that benefits them. We never get the opportunity to make them make a decision that benefits us. We need to do that. "They're telling us two weeks, they've been working on this thing for three years," he said. Three years. Nobody from this council knew it. I sit on the airport board with the members of the board, I've never heard one iota in the four years that I've been on that board as a comptroller. I've never heard a single word about this. I don't know if any members of the delegation have talked about it in the executive session, but here we are, two weeks before the end of, or well, till the end of the year, and they want this council to make a decision that could cost the county a lot of money with no buy-in, to Mr. Thornton's point, is, "Yeah, we're going to get in a partnership with somebody with no money? It makes no sense to me." They can't come up with half of $12,000 a month, and we're going to risk all of it for an airport that may have a disaster and will end up paying. They can't come up with half of $12,000 a month. A lousy $6,000 a month they can't come up with from the Lackawanna County. Kudos to the airport, they're giving us $2,500 towards that LEO program, which helps. But we're paying the lion's share of that, and there should be an agreement. They canceled that agreement with the council when they took the funding away. And council never did anything to them to say, "You don't have an agreement. We're not allowing the DA to do that. The DA can do it, he's independent." But we need to have a little bit more strong will to these people that are always holding guns to our head, saying, "It's time for us to make a decision." I don't think that's right. This council has a right to know this stuff. When something's wrong, you guys should know. And I appreciate, you know, you guys standing firm on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else, public comment in the audience? All right, we have one on the Zoom, Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the airport goes, I just wanted to remind you and council and the manager and if the district attorney is listening, that I did send emails to all of you last year when this was brought up and about the LEO program and the security, the funding that was needed for the airport. And I would direct your attention, Mr. Chair, and members of council and manager Croco, to the TSA Homeland Security Program for security fees that was implemented in the aftermath of September 11, called the September 11th Security Fee, which is collected by the air carriers from the passengers at the time air transportation is purchased, meaning from their tickets. Air carriers then remit the fees to TSA, and then the fee is currently at $5.60 per one-way trip in an air transportation that originates at an airport in the United States, except that a fee is imposed per round trip that shall not exceed $11.20 for the round trip. So I think that is something that the airport board, Luzern, you guys should take up very strong consideration for. And as far as creating an airport authority, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it would behoove Luzern County to enter into a co-op authority similar to Lehigh and North Hampton County, which has the Lehigh Valley Regional Airport. So, and I do believe they use this September 11th Security Fee for their security funding. So I think, Mr. Chairman, and also I believe they use a baggage fee, if I'm not mistaken, last time I checked. So you might want to have the manager or yourself contact the Lehigh Valley Regional Airport or their authority, one of their authority board members to... And on a side note, as far as with the court funding, Mr. Chairman, the manager brought up, you know, the other counties. I would like to make for your edification, council's edification, that Allegheny County paid for the lion's share of the three lawsuits that all recognized that the counties should get their reimbursements. And the last time that it happened, in 2013, Allegheny County and the six other counties were short-changed in the payment of that lawsuit, the last lawsuit from the Supreme Court in 2013. So it's going to take a little time if you're going to try to get all the counties, especially Allegheny County, to pony up money for another lawsuit when they paid for the other three. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.